...importance for the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act. Can we go through the list of attendees, please?
Mrs. Giblin.
Here.
Mr. Moran.
Sure.
Mrs. Martin is absent. Mr. Maxwell.
Here.
Mr. Rowe.
Here.
All right, with that, let's do the flag.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. The only opening remarks I have is we're going to do a presentation first and then step into executive session before we run the rest of the meeting. So with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Lavalva for the presentation or whomever.
Sure.
Yeah. Please, can it come up, Miss Emma? I think all of them.
I'm gonna get here.
So we all were at the Rose House and we didn't really know what to do. So we found this, we started to paint because we found the campus. And we decided to paint four, like, main parts of Spring Lake and the four places we liked to go the most. So we did the lake. And then here we have the clock tower with the flowers in the background. And the beach is down here. And then you have town with all the stores, like, Chocolatier, Bear Wires, Faradye.
Yeah.
Um, we started out by, um, started out by thinking of, like, who, like, who, what we wanted to put on our painting to see, like, what we could make into, like, on, like, top.
Like what we liked to do now? Like what we like?
Yeah. What our favorite things to see and do. And, um, there's sort of, like, our favorite, like, our favorite color. And then, like, surfing. And then, like, the favorite stores.
Gigi, did you all paint at the same time? Did you paint all four sections at the same time?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, like, split it up.
So, like, I worked on here with Sam.
Mm-hmm.
And then I think Nora and Emma worked on that. No, they worked on that. And then everybody, like, moved around doing it.
Did you get any paint on your floor in the new house?
Um, we did it outside. We did it outside in the grass.
Very nice. Good idea.
Very responsible.
Smart.
Nora, you have anything to add?
Uh... Oh, we kind of added our, like, favorite hobbies today. Like Gigi said, like, there's some surfboards because we have a lot of, like, surfers here.
Mm-hmm.
And we really enjoyed to go to the beach. And we just, like, um, of course, like, our favorite store is, like, Faradye. And this, like, it's just basically where we all hang out together, like, as a community in our favorite places. Like, sometimes me and Emma, like, go across the bridge, like, during Christmas. And it's, like, um, we look at the lights. It's just honestly, like, our favorite places to be.
And you were just there. You didn't go there to do this painting. You were just thinking of something you could do.
Yeah.
That's, that's very inspirational. Thank you. How about you girls? Anything to say or Carter?
This is my doll.
Oh, Hood. It's over there.
Everybody knows Hood.
Everybody knows Hood.
Thanks. Thank you.
Well, this is, this is a great show of collaboration and how the arts inspire all of you outside of school, too.
Yeah.
So I love seeing this. I love that our, our more senior students at the school and our younger students get together informally to do this. So thank you guys so much. This is really important and, uh, I can't wait to find a place in the school that we can hang this.
It's free, right? We can have it?
Yeah.
All right. Great job.
Thank you so much, girls.
Thank you.
And boys.
Do you guys want to get in the picture with us?
Sure.
Yeah, do you want to do it like that? Why don't we move the podium?
I'll do it right over here by the, by the.
Do you want to all go to the table?
All right, let's go to the table.
Yeah, right? The nice tablecloth? Let's do it this way.
All right.
Yeah. Everybody can get together. How do we minimize, how do we minimize the screen? Steve, how do I minimize the screen so it's not in your backdrop?
You just have to pull that board and...
Laura, I'll just AI that out.
Yeah. Okay. It looks good. It looks good. Yeah. This is great. Oh, if you get in, it looks good. No, 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 they're good. Ready?
Hey, you want to stay next to Carter? Come on, man.
No.
Oh, oh.
Oh, I'm, no, I'm the only board member jumping in. Sorry.
All right.
Pretty sure you did.
One, two, three. Beautiful. Awesome. Good job. That was great.
Thank you for sharing this with us.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know. Thanks, guys.
Good job, Carter.
Hi, it's work. I love that you had a canvas just, like, laying around your house.
Right. Thank you, guys, for coming.
Thank you.
You sure you don't want to stay a little longer? Huh? All right.
Okay, so we are going to move into executive session. Um, since a lot of the voting tonight is, um, based on staffing, we felt it was best to go into executive session first um, so that we could have a chance to talk before going into votes. Um, so with that, um, we are going to be discussing matters that involve our confidential student matters and matters involving employees in terms of their employment and contract. So with that, um, I would like to get a motion to move into, we will take action at the end of the meeting, so I'd like to get a motion to move into executive session.
I'll make a motion.
I would...
All right, Mr. Maxwell.
Yeah, he was the second.
Uh... Oh, yes, Mr. Rowe and Mr. Maxwell. Yep.
Okay.
Uh, Mrs. Martin's absent. Mr. Maxwell.
Present.
Mr. Moran.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Rowe.
Yes.
And Mrs. Giblin.
Yes.
It's at six thirty, seven PM.
Okay, great.
We need to make a motion to exit.
We're ready.
Okay, all right. We need to make a motion to exit our executive session that we were just in, so, great.
Mr. Moran, Mr. Rowe. All right, roll call. Mrs. Martin's absent. Mr. Maxwell.
Yes.
Mr. Moran.
Yes.
Mr. Rowe.
Yes.
Mrs. Giblin.
Yes.
Time is 7:20 PM.
Great, thanks for everyone jumping in there. Okay, I think we are going to the inner district units of study presentation?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
Yes. Would you like to start with mythology? Mythology?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, cool. You just let me know. Here, I have them ready. They're queued up. Oh, yeah, there is. This helps the public virtually hear us.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Shannon Rossi, middle school ELA. It's a pleasure to be here. This year's cross-district collaboration in middle school ELA was born from a shared vision, both between educators and as part of our district's initiative to promote cross-district learning and connection. Carol Walters, the middle school ELA teacher from Seabird Elementary School. Together, we saw the potential to build something truly impactful by running our students in schools together through innovative, hands-on curriculum. That vision came to life last year when we launched a shared mythology unit that lended creativity, collaboration, and student voice. Students explored the ancient myths through the modern lens of hip-hop, writing original lyrics inspired by mythological characters and themes. The second unit also featured the incredible contributions of Purple Norris, a hip-hop educator and historian who worked directly with students to guide their lyric writing and deepen their understanding of both the genre and the stories. To kick things off, students, including myself, Mrs. Ping, Mrs. Dever, we traveled down to Seabird School where we attended a high-energy assembly with Purple Norris at Seabird Elementary School to launch the unit in a shared and meaningful way. Similarly, our nonfiction unit on therapy animals stemmed from another teacher-to-teacher collaboration, this time with Mrs. Courtney Genitz, another teacher at Seabird Elementary School, who brought certified therapy dog training down through 71 to share this impactful lesson with the students of Mounds. The lesson was rooted in research-based learning as students explore nonfiction sources to better understand the emotional and psychological benefits of therapy dogs. These are repeat units that we continue to build and enhance each year, providing authentic, hands-on learning and meaningful opportunities for students to collaborate with peers from another district. In addition to these two projects, which I actually today, just going over all this, I was like, wow, I forgot about this one too. Carol Walters and I also created the hero unit last year, which brought together students from across our districts to answer the essential question, what defines a hero? This was done through literature, discussion, real-world connections. We collaborated with them and met with them during class time via Google meets, and we also got in person for that one as well. As part of the unit, several ELA classes across the district also read this book together in a joint experience, the memoir Believe by Eric Legrand, and teachers were able to implement the shared lessons and resources from that unit that we had created. The experience culminated in a powerful cross-district assembly featuring Eric Legrand himself, who was here in our school, and with his inspiring story left a lasting impact on students and staff alike. None of this would be possible without the unwavering support of Dr. Valva, Mr. Layton, and our Board of Education. I truly appreciate all of your support. Dr. Valva, Mr. Layton, never turning away, knocking their door on me.
You don't even knock, you just come in.
That's true. I say I have an idea, I'm over here. They're just always willing to help turn my paranormal dreams into reality. Their encouragement, trust, and passion allow ideas like these to not only tinge you, but to truly thrive. So, thank you. I look forward to continuing to grow and expand these experiences in support of this meaningful initiative. So, tonight, we were going to do two videos that offer a glimpse into these moments. We have a highlight video that was put together, produced by Mrs. Carol Dever, and then we have a quick reel that showcases our therapy dog visit with the sixth graders.
Thank you, Mrs. Rossi.
A long time ago, we were under the stars of legend. Seventh graders from H.W. Mounds to Seabird fused new mythology to hip-hop, turning epic tales into lyrical narratives. Through rhythm and rhyme, they uncovered angles of insight. Now, the legacy of their creation is ready to be shared.
Oops.
... Okay. What do you use to describe a diet? What do you try to do? Three, three can be really easy. He needs really needy, or everything he needs to be very needy. He's scared of the angels, and he's afraid of the sound. It's powerful, he ain't... Whatever the Lord is, he's different from the people he meets. He has to try to hide his way from the world, from the people he meets. Very, very... He's very independent, but he has to be very... He is swolish, he's still a natural, he's well-intentioned, he's well... He don't sleep with the... He lets the kids chase cars, and he's... He was a rebel, he's always stopped, always the knocker, he's...
That's his head. For me, he wasn't cunning, and ain't with the Satan. He thought he was bold and bull or something. So, one day, he marched right up to Zeus, and only he wanted to steer the human something like that. The mirror is the goddess, the goddess of the flame, and he attacked the couple, girl, and the system is advanced.
Okay, when he tried to pray, he thought, oh, the Lord is... He started to cry, and I really wish I could throw a rock. Look at her, she started to laugh, so he... He... He said, it's Jesus, the Lord, we're... Ah, King God. He... He's moving up to the throne, he's trying to climb a high floor, he's feeling trapped. And if he can't do one more thing, he's... He's free, he's out, he's... He's stuck, he's stuck like a truffle leaf, and he's... He goes, he goes, he goes... He showers, getting that... He's first to speak. It's that cold, it's hard, he's so sensitive, stressed. Close your eyes, he puts his hands up. Not to get away from the day, but to fly around the street. Roll it around to the cabin, bring it back over there, and bring us over there. I feel alive, I'm sure of my drive. But for the awesome of the father. So, holy steps, very self-aware, he's... 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 that had originally quoted it wasn't able to work with their partner contractors who are in this area. So, we are using their template without costs to go out for another bid to state contract suppliers, and we'll see where we stand on that. That's kind of the buildings and grounds synopsis.
Okay, great.
Dave, anything more?
Anything on curriculum instruction? I know Mrs. Martin isn't here. Yeah.
We, like, because we talked about so much at the curriculum meeting prior, we actually canceled the meeting that would have been for this because we doubled in fire, so we're meeting again after this meeting.
Yeah, we've only had two weeks in between, so that's totally normal.
And I'm kind of looking at Mr. Layton, that's about right, right?
Very kind.
Anything to update on finance? I feel like.
I'll take the same path.
Yeah. Yeah. Personnel, I'm, we're voting on a lot of personnel items tonight. We covered off in the meetings and had executive session where Steve walked us through all of the justifications for the staffing more proven tonight, so I think we're pretty good there.
Yes.
We'll go through each one of those as we go through the agenda. Anything on policy?
Policy, we did need last week to do a final review before policy's up for second reading and approval this evening, and there are also a couple of state-required administrative positions that we're looking to approve. Anything else?
Nope.
All right. All right, any, I guess I'll just ask blanket-wise, since it's only been two weeks, any updates from any of the ad hoc committees? No? Okay, we'll just.
PTA's having their party tomorrow.
Yes, that, and I ran into, well, I didn't interrupt that yet.
Well, just any of the ad hocks, any updates I'm asking for?
Oh.
Yeah, liaison, sorry.
I ran into Mr. Cluthian, and he said they're working really hard on the kitchen tour and their party's tomorrow. Thank you.
All right. All right, we'll move to superintendent's report then.
So, Mr. Layton?
All right. So, last week was Teacher Appreciation Week, and we kind, I kind of chose to structure the week with Dr. Lavalva to celebrate all faculty as well. We appreciate all the things that all of our faculty do here at Mounts. So, I just, we put together a very robust week for our faculty, and teachers were provided a lot of donations for meals throughout last week, as well as opportunities to win some fun gift cards. All again, donations from local businesses that I had reached out to leading up to the week, so most of it was very gratis. Dr. Lavalva and I did cater a lunch for the faculty from Bubba Coo's on Tuesday, and also we just want to thank the PTA for sponsoring a lunch on Thursday for our faculty and also providing our faculty with a very, very generous gift. So, thank you to the PTA for their continued support. Just wanted to recognize, though, the following businesses for their generous donations as well. E Clean Bro, F45 Gym of Wall Township, Driftwood Coffee House, Crumble of Brick, Bonefish Grill of Brick, Spring Lake Pizza, Fratello's Pizza, Chick-fil-A of Ocean Township, Columns in Avon, Parker House and Seagurt, Hoffman's Ice Cream, Philly Crawling, and Sunshine Daydream in Point Pleasant Beach. So, that, they helped really make the day special and the entire week, sorry, and the entire week special for our faculty, and that hopefully feel extremely appreciated.
You made me just a tad hungrier.
I know, right? Like, for example, E Clean Bro donated 50 meals on Monday.
That's amazing. That's very, very nice.
It's amazing what you get if you ask.
Yeah.
Especially for teachers. On last Friday, I'm sorry, last Wednesday, we had our Bike, Walk, and Roll to School Day in collaboration with the Spring Lake PD, and I just want to thank our, express our appreciation to Tom Bailey's of Spring Lake and the Spring Lake Police Department for their support in continuing the Bike, Walk, and Roll to School Day tradition. We did actually do it on the National Day this year, which is the first time in two years that we've done that. And so, that really worked out. Thank you to Dr. Lavalva for running point while I was going to get some of these donations in the morning. And I just thank you to all the students and the parents for their participation. And now, on to enrollment, Dr. Lavalva.
Enrollment remains steady for this month. HIB, we have, we're finalizing the case number two tonight. No other incidents there to report. Monthly safety drill, on May 2nd, we had a fire drill. Moving into approval of the minutes, Mrs. Giblin?
Yeah, can we get a motion to approve the minutes for our, the regular meeting and executive session of April 28th?
Second.
All right, Mr. Moran, Mr. Maxwell. All right, Mrs. Martin's absent. Mr. Maxwell.
Yes.
Mr. Moran.
Yes.
Mr. Rowe.
Yes.
And Mrs. Giblin.
Abstain.
Steve, okay.
All right, moving on to action items. We have nothing under curriculum instruction. Why don't we walk through personnel? We have B1 through B6 for approval. Do you want to go through each one and then?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, so B1 is the motion to approve the list of faculty members. These are 10-month employees, all members of the Education Association. Board has been given this list, and we'll present the list, we'll add it to our, as a link here, but it is for all the 25, 26 faculty, school year. B2 is a motion to approve the employees to complete summer 25 committee work and curriculum development work. Mr. Layton provided the board with the list of individuals there. We have a motion to approve a young lady who's in the audience today, Mrs. Kristen Sweeney. Welcome, Sweeney family.
Hello.
Hi.
There's a lot of whispering going on.
We do this once a month, you're welcome to keep coming back here. Mrs. Sweeney is, is being recommended to join us. She's currently a teacher in Rumsen Borough School District. The board's been privy to her curriculum, her resume, and all of her credentials. We're looking to approve her as our new supervisor of student services and instruction for a unique 200-day contract. It's the teacher's contract plus 14 days in the summer. B4 is a motion to approve Mrs. Phil to serve as an informal mentor to Mrs. Sweeney, up to three hours per month. B5 is the same, Mr. Nususki, who's been a substitute, a summer custodian with us for years. I think it's back, going back to 2017. Look for him to come back this summer again. And a motion to authorize the administration to advertise for a part-time, 200-day administrative assistant to the central offices for the 25, 26 school year.
Okay, can I get a motion for B1 through B6, please?
I'll make a motion. Second.
All right.
All right, any questions, comments? Ms. Sweeney, I'm assuming we're going to vote here, but welcome and thanks for coming to the board meeting tonight.
I am very excited, very happy, and thrilled to be beginning this new position. It's been, it was a very lengthy, internally process, but I gave so much confidence in the administration and the care that they're ensuring, making sure we'll, you know, they care so much about the school's success and my success as well. So, it's been a really, really nice process, and I'm very excited. That's over.
I felt that way too at one point.
All right, so without that, anything else from any of you, or are we good? All right, we can roll call then.
All right, Mrs. Martin's absent, Mr. Maxwell.
B1, yes. B2, yes. B3, no. B4, yes. B5, yes. And 6, no.
So, B2 and B6, no?
3 and 6.
Okay, my apologies, and all the rest of the B motions are yes, correct? Okay, thank you.
Okay, who's next? Miss Moran. Did you get, are you good?
Yes. Okay. Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Giblin?
Yes, on all B1 through B6.
Congratulations, Mrs. Sweeney.
Thank you.
C is policy. We have a motion to approve a facility use request. Mr. Graemer wants to use a softball field for his end-of-the-year baseball party like he did last year. The motions that Mr. Rowe referenced at the start of the meeting are there for you. These are for second read and adoption. Thank you to those who reached out to confirm that you were okay with the electronic, use of electronic communication devices in school. C3 is a motion to appoint the administration, so there are various positions that are required by the state. The affirmative action officers originally appointed for this year were Mrs. Levine and myself. Since Mrs. Levine's departure, we had to include Mrs. Phil, and we also grabbed Mr. Layton because all the three of us are working on at this time is a, is a rather voluminous document called the Comprehensive Equity Plan that we'll present to the board before we are able to submit it for your approval. We'll get it to you as soon as we can. And then, C4 is the motion for us to work on that plan, and C5 is a motion that the Spring Lake Board of Ed either affirms, rejects, or modifies the recommendation of the superintendent. Should that be a separate motion, Mrs. Cornell? A standalone motion for C6?
C5. Nope.
Nope. All right, so they'll have to determine what it is that you want to say there, Mrs. Giblin.
Yeah, I got it.
And then, C6, would you like me to read the added motion?
Yes.
Yes, please.
All right. All right, we are going to be adding a motion, C6, motion to grant the family of student number 5978380903 an extension to their 12 months of tuition-free enrollment at HW Mounts while residing out of district during renovation or construction of their home as granted in Board Policy 5111. The extension is not to exceed four months concluding on August 31st, 2025, by which all other conditions of the policy are also extended and must be met.
Great. Okay, so can I get a motion for C1 through C6, please?
So, I mean, would.
All right.
Second.
Any questions, concerns? Okay.
All right, Mrs. Martin's absent, Mr. Maxwell.
Yes.
Mr. Moran.
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
And Mrs. Giblin.
Yes, C1 through C5, I, or C, sorry, C1, 2, 3, 4, and 6. I'm abstaining from C5.
And C5?
6.
That the board?
C5.
C5 is the board affirms the recommendations of the superintendent and finds the hip case substantiated. Okay.
And you're abstaining in C5?
I'm abstaining from C5.
All the rest are yes?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, finance.
Moving on to finance, D1 is a motion to approve the payment of the bills list for May 12th. You'll notice a large majority of the bills are part of the Rod Graham project. We have a motion to approve gross payroll expenses, just the one this time. And D3 is a motion to authorize the administration to submit an initial application for the Trees for Schools tree planting grants for New Jersey. Mrs. Wally and I worked along with Mr. Bill Bradshaw, who's a licensed tree expert. We surveyed the property, determined that we could in fact plant up to 16 trees on our property, removing the invasive Bradford pear trees that are near the end of their life. The project cost would be $31,245, and the reason why I state that to the board is we'd have to pay upfront, and then we get the money back, we get 80% of it after the trees are planted, we get the remaining 20% after two years because they want to make sure the trees are living and doing well. I would propose that we allocate that $31,245 from the remainder of this year's unfunded balances, and thereby, we don't have to impose on next year's budget, and I recommend approval. It's a good grant, and working with our town is always a good thing.
All right, can I get a motion for D1 through D3?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, any questions? Comments? All right.
Mrs. Martin's absent, Mr. Maxwell.
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Giblin?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, any new business? The only thing I had, Steve, was I noticed that there's a security, there's some security grants that are floating out there now. It came through New Jersey school boards, I can send it to you. I can't remember if in the Buildings and Grounds project, I think there was some new security features that we were looking at improving or enhancing.
Glad to see it.
Yeah, so I just thought it'd be helpful, it covers a good portion of our spend. So, I'll send you the email. I didn't know if you got it or not.
I didn't notice it.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Uh-huh.
I love writing the grants.
I know, grant writing should be your, your next, your next gig. Okay, any comments on agenda items or non-agenda items? Either one I'll take. No? All right. Okay, so with that, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll just make a motion.
Second.
Mr. Moran, Mr. Maxwell. All right, Mrs. Martin's absent, Mr. Maxwell.
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Giblin?
Yes.
Time is 7:46 PM.
Thank you, everybody, welcome.